Ms. Joan, do we have a quorum?
Yes, ma'am. Is Jay here?
So guess what, Ms. Joan? I'm gonna start us. Oh. So it's my honor and privilege to call tonight's meeting to order at 6:02. And this is a committee of a whole meeting, and it's September 21st. And our first order of business is the acceptance of last week's minutes, which is the committee of the whole meeting on September 14th. I've got Liz for first. Can I have a second, please? Lee, for a second? And any discussion on the minutes? Lee, Liz?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask if we needed to, in our membership. It says members present, but it doesn't say any members absent. And I'm not sure what the status is of our ninth member. So.
Oh, that's true.
She's not mentioned there. And that, if she is still a member of this board, just in abstentia, we need to indicate that.
So I don't know how to answer that question in terms of whether we should just be listing. We do for our regular board meeting minutes is that who's present and who's not present.
Right.
Ours in our regular, I never thought about it in terms of the committee of the whole. The status is, and I have been active on this, not every moment active, but active on this is she, Gretchen is the person that we're talking about. Gretchen has resigned in public. She resigned into the, as in the paper. But she has not sent an official notice to the town clerk, which is what she's been told to do. So that has happened. So it's not an official. But she has basically in public stated that she is resigned from the board.
Is it, a question, is it to town council or is it to the town clerk?
To the town clerk.
Yeah, town clerk, okay.
So it goes to the town clerk and then it goes to the chair of the board.
Okay.
So I have not received that, so that's sort of where that is. But trust me, it's not because I have not tried to work on that.
Of course. I just wanted to make sure that our meeting minutes reflected what they're supposed to. And that's all I wanted to point that out.
So I mean, do we, do people, do we want Joan to start putting members on and not present? On both the.
She usually does, I think.
Regular, on the regular board, on the regular minutes, yes, that is true. But oftentimes not on the minutes.
Yeah, I don't know.
Right. So Joan, would you be willing to kind of throw on who is, at least who is not here? Maybe who's absent, because then it's just, whatever. That would be great if you could do that, Joan. Any other question or discussion about the minutes?
So is she officially still a member until she takes care of notifying the town clerk?
I've asked for legal comment on that. Andrea?
Yes. I think we should do the COW minutes the way we've always done them. I don't think we should alter what we've, what we've been, what is in.
Okay.
I agree. And I will put her back as an absentee board member.
I don't know what we've done. I don't, I didn't recognize, that's why I brought it up.
You know what? Joan and I will check. And if we do this, if we've done it in the past on COW meetings, we'll repeat that practice.
Okay, thank you.
Joan, you and I will talk tomorrow.
Yes, sir.
Great.
Hi, Rita.
Hi.
Any other discussion on the minutes? Hearing on, all those in favor of the minutes approval of the meeting minutes for September 14th, 2020? Please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? It looks like it's passed, thank you. The next agenda item is the update of the hybrid and distant learning program technology, and then live streaming procedures. And Susan, thank you for sending the, your stuff. That's the word I wanted, was document.
So if I could have permission to just share the screen so I can tell everybody where this is located?
Got the thumbs up from Mark.
Yes.
Oh, good, thank you, Mark. So I know this is in little print, but I'm, this is actually a document that I really took our very comprehensive plan. And I took the MOU that we worked on with the GEA. And I've sent it out to Beth and to the administrators to take a look at, just trying to bullet point so that teachers and parents would understand what are the highlights of this hybrid learning plan? So it starts with an introduction to our return. And then it goes into what are the Groton learning management systems that we're using? What are some of the expectations for hybrid learning? Meeting in small cohorts, face-to-face part of the time, remote part of the time, and then for those students who are totally remote? And then what can students and families opt for? And so we've talked about that. And certainly the flexibility if parents should want to come back to a hybrid. For instance, we've had several who started out remote, but have asked to come back hybrid. So they need to just talk to their principal about that. And we need to work out the transportation piece, and we'll get them back in the seat. Ultimately, we really want all of our kids back. We'd love to have them 100% face-to-face, but we're going to do this very carefully and keep health and safety in mind, as always. So there is this live streaming on Zoom. And teachers will even record these. They also have pre-recorded mini lessons. I think in Groton, one of the things we are just really careful about, while we know that kids who are in front of us will get that full day. Remote learners, we need to make sure that they have a half-day of work and meeting with teachers and office hours. At least a half-day, could be more. And we don't want it totally asynchronous, and we don't want it totally synchronized. So in other words, we don't want little children in front of a screen for seven hours in a day. That would just be horrible. And even grown children, you know? We don't want them listening to an hour of lecture, one after the other. So we're really trying to balance this. And we've worked very closely with the GEA and the AGSA to make this very doable for our students, our teachers, and their families. So I really just highlighted those things, like even attendance. It'll be monitored through the student participation, their work completion, and these established checkpoints that teachers will have, whether it's a homeroom period, whether it's a check-in on their LMS, which is their learning management system, or maybe it could be a question of the day. So we really believe in this flexibility. The state has really said that districts have the right to make, you know, to make their attendance requirements. And we do have to report it to the state. So, you know, there are accountabilities still in place. I think more so than when we were totally remote learning. So I kind of wanted to give you that overview. We also think it's really important, that communication between our families and their support of the students is a key ingredient to success in schooling, whether you're full-on in with your teacher, whether you're face-to-face, partially in a hybrid model, or whether you're remote learning. So we really do appreciate our families for all their support. And then I had some communication tips and just kind of a wrap-up and the reference to the Adapt, Advance, and Achieve addendum, which we used in setting this. So I really wanted to condense it. I felt like it was so cumbersome. And there were certainly lots of people who read through it. And we still have it on our website. But we're going to also put this on the website to just give clear guidance. And so I'm going to stop sharing here.
Thank you for that, Susan. That's great.
I thought it was important. I was hearing from everybody. And I thought, how can I make this a simpler read and clarify this? And certainly Beth has been right by my side, and the administrators have been right by. You know, it's not something that I made up. I really used the documents that we had to try to really clarify this. So the other things, I did talk to Dennis about the technology devices. He'll be meeting with principals using the Destiny data that showed us what we checked out to students, what we might have checked back and checked out again. So he's got a lot of good data to share to make sure that we get to a place within the next couple of weeks. Our kindergarten Chrome tablets are coming in. So that's really an area that we're most concerned with. And, you know, we've had to recycle for the high school. We did receive those wonderful Dell laptops that are being put in some of our labs that really require, whether it's manufacturing pipeline, whether it's some of the project lead-away courses. And kids will be able to check out one of those and turn in their Chromebooks. So we're trying to give the right devices for the kids. And then all freshmen will get a laptop that was designated to have one-on-one from the state of Connecticut. And when they receive their one-on-one device, which is coming up in the next week or so, they will return their Chromebook, and those Chromebooks will be reallocated. The real quest, I think, in our district is through all of this initiative and the 4,000 more Chromebooks and tabs, tablets that we're receiving, is that we'll really have one-to-one middle school and high school. And for our elementaries, especially our youngest elementary children, they'll have a Chromebook at home, and they'll have a tablet in school so that they don't have to be bringing it back and forth. So that's kind of the goal, and we're working on that. Dennis will meet with the principals tomorrow to kind of go through the data and verify that. And then there's the live streaming procedures. You know, it's a, it's a big learning curve. We're all learning to do this. There's a lot of equipment and technology needed. So we do have document cameras throughout the district, but we needed more. So Dennis responded right away and ordered 200 more document cameras, which are really kind of an essential ingredient to live streaming and really getting training on the new Promathion boards in front. I think teachers have discovered really interesting ways to be able to use the technology. But we're continuously trying to lay out more professional development, especially on those Wednesdays. Give teachers the support they need for the new equipment and this new way of doing thing. So I would just say be patient. We're on it. We're, I feel like we've grown by leaps and bounds. But our motto has always been start slow and grow. And I think that that message needs to really go out to the community, that we are definitely trying to engage kids more. And teachers are meeting with them during morning meeting, read alouds, during mini lessons. They have office hours where they can respond to students and families. And that Wednesday was really a good day, where I was hearing good feedback from teachers that I just loved having my whole class together. It was just a great opportunity to be able to communicate, either in small groups or whole classroom, to be able to answer questions from parents and students, and then to also plan and be prepared for the next week coming up. So we thank the board for supporting us with this hybrid model. Know that we're listening. We know it's not all, you know, sugar and spice. We know that there are things that need to be worked on and questions that come up. So we have an ear to the ground, listening to families and to teachers. And with best support, she certainly gives me a heads up when we need to kind of calm the tide and, you know, bring everybody together because we know the social-emotional learning, even the state says so, is so critical for everyone. So that's kind of my update. And I'm really happy that, you know, we've gotten some resources from the state to provide some awesome software and, you know, capabilities for teachers to do this great work.
Liz?
Susan, just a quick question. Have all the computers, all the Chromebooks and tablets, have they arrived yet? Or are they still on order?
No. There's about 4,000 from the state of Connecticut that will be coming within the next couple of weeks. We have those Chrome tablets for our youngest little learners coming within the next couple of weeks. So we've had to really kind of make do with what we've had. And we've also used the resources, the laptops. This was Dennis's idea, you know, when we were brainstorming to get the freshmen the laptops from Dell, which was the one-to-one initiative, and they'll be able to recycle back the Chromebooks.
Okay, I just, I've been asked, when are they coming? And I keep saying.
I know. It's a big concern because they were ordered way back in May. And it's just, everybody wants the same thing at the same time.
I hear you. So I just wanted to make sure I'm giving out the right information, that they're still in process, and to be patient. So that's, you know, just wanted to clarify.
Okay, no problem.
Rita?
Susan, can you refresh my memory and tell me how much student-teacher contact there is on Wednesdays? What is a day like?
So the state really expects students, whether they're remote or in class, to at least have a half-day's work. That's how they describe it. So a half-day's work means that it's a combination of mini lessons and student-teacher contact. But it's also, a portion of that has to be the independent work. Could also be collaborative work with other students. So we're looking at the three-to-four-hour mark as measured of the assignments that we're giving out and really expecting more like mini lessons, 15 minutes for each course or 15 minutes for a morning meeting so that they're not sitting on a computer the whole day, or even a half-day. They have to have also off-you-go readers, writers, and mathematicians to do some of the work themselves. So I would say Wednesdays, there are a couple hours of bringing the whole class together and having office hours for the teacher, communicating. Teachers are really able to set those up between 9:00 and 3:00. And the rest of the time, they're able to do collaborative planning, individual planning, and, you know, meetings, if they're meetings that they want to set up with each other to do some of that great work.
So when do parents get to ask questions of the teacher? Is that on Wednesdays? You know, if they have a specific question or if they have a concern about their child?
So we have several new tools, Rita, that I'm really excited about. We have the Remind app, but it's still, where it's a work in progress getting it out to all teachers. But they can send text messages, which we've learned that parents really appreciate. They can go back and forth in their communication. So that could be really at any times, teachers are expected during the school day to be able to answer them. But that communication is there. Then there's also the learning management system that they can communicate off of. And there's email. So those are the three major ways that parents and teachers can communicate back and forth.
Thank you.
Susan, when are we going to have like a sense about, like, how's it going? Like, are we, are we sending out a survey to teachers and administration and whatever? And not that I want to bog people back down again, but it would be interesting to kind of think out loud about, yeah, this is, you know, this is not an easy thing, but it's working or it's, you know.
So we've actually talked about that, Kim. We do have, Mike had really suggested that we continue with our focus groups and tap into those focus groups. But the principals also said they would like to be able to have a survey that we go out to teachers to collect more data and to parents. So that's something we'll be talking about. I don't know that it's on our agenda for tomorrow's principals meeting, but Mike and I can make sure that we address that. Because I agree, that's something that needs to happen.
Actually, it is.
Oh, good.
Couple of things. I, way back when, I always envisioned the parent focus groups going, at least through the fall, so that we could get that feedback. The second thing that we've done is I've, we had a group, about a 30-person teacher group last year called our Teacher Leader Fellowship Program. And I have invited them to come in remotely and on a regular basis. And that will be their leadership tour this year to give us some feedback. The surveys are definitely a part of it. And on Friday, Susan and I actually are going to have our first. We've been in, instead of doing regular walkthroughs, we're actually asking for invitations. So fifth-grade class at Charles Barnham has invited us in to see how a live lesson is done. I'll tell you, the thing that surprises me the most is that it is very difficult to do a live-streamed lesson and engage the children in front of you. And a lot of people are saying the children in front of them are the ones that are more disengaged. So somehow, somehow we have to balance that. That totally threw me at first, but I get it. It's, Seth Danner was telling me, he did a faculty meeting last week where he asked the one representative from each team to come into his meeting. And the rest of the teachers were in the, in their rooms via, you know, via video conference. And he said it was extremely difficult to do this. But he wanted to show, he actually wanted to experience it. And he wanted to show the teachers that he certainly understands the challenges of doing live-stream and in-person engagement is really hard. The word that I hear around the district as I visit classes and kids, I talk to the, talk to the kids in the classes, is everyone's experimenting. Somebody, somebody had their document camera oriented the wrong way, so the teacher was upside down. And it was quite disorienting to the children to have a teacher teaching standing on his head. So those are in a sort of silly, but that's part of the practical, how do we do all this stuff?
I think it goes back to balancing, you know? It's really critical. And I know we've had principals say to the teachers, you know, you've got those kids in front of you, they're kind of in your bubble, you know? That's kind of a focus, so we really have to be patient with this whole process.
Patient, but, you know, working conscientiously on it. So I think.
Absolutely.
Every meeting will, I suspect, we'll be bringing this back to you.
I appreciate that. I really appreciate that. And, you know, Beth, please make sure that your, your group know that the board just really knows that this is untenable. You guys, and you guys are doing it, and you're doing, and I know that you're doing it well under those circumstances. So I just really, you know, the board just really appreciates that, along with.
And please.
Partners.
Please know that we're still meeting with the GEA and the AGSA on a really regular basis. And their constituents talk to them very openly. So they give us that feedback, and we listen to that. And Lori Lapine is often involved, too. So we really want to be very responsive.
Thank you.
Sounds like great fodder for publishing down the road.
You're right.
Yes, write a book.
Yeah. Oh, the book that you could write, Zooming Kindergarteners. Oh.
There's a multi-million dollar maker. There you go. Your retirement here.
Because my book, I'll do a chapter in your book. It will be the Zooming Techniques of Being a Private Therapist.
Oh, that could be really a good chapter.
And doing teletherapy with a four-year-old. Who invites mom who's taking a shower? Do I say anymore?
Oh, great.
So moving on.
Have stories.
Write them down, folks.
So, Dr. Quinier, so the update on fall sports. Now, I just got off the phone with someone who stated that WFSB announced in Branford, Connecticut, there were 11 kids in the high school that, or North Branford, that tested positive, and they were field hockey.
Yeah. Well, I'll give you the update. And we'll continue to monitor. The update is today was the first day of full-team activities. That is to say that we've stopped the, the practice of cohorting 10, 10 students to a group just for, for physical fitness or skill development. So now today, full teams came together. So that's all our low, our low-risk sports like cross-country, our medium-risk sports like field hockey and soccer. And the big update from last week, thankfully, is the CIAC and the Department of Public Health agreed that field hockey, not field hockey, excuse me, volleyball, if the students wear masks, that was taken from a relatively high-risk activity because it's indoors, to medium risk. So they can play it. So the, our volleyball team is, in fact, playing, but playing with masks. And very limited, I still don't think we have the rules quite yet, very, very limited spectators. Football, as you probably know, has been canceled. The CIAC is not going to sponsor it. The Department of Public Health did not feel that there was any way it could possibly be played right now, even with masks and all the sorts of, they tried a few things. So what, what is happening right now is the CIAC is considering a spring season sometime before baseball. But, you know, of course, we don't know what the virus infection rate is going to be then. There is some talk, I spoke to our athletic director and our football coach, and there is some talk about, it wouldn't be CIAC sanctioned, but it could be a league playing of like a flag football, seven-on-seven flag football, which they consider to be medium risk, and kind of like a powerlifting contest for linemen. I don't know, that's being planned, it's being talked about. There will be no contest, by the way, in any sports until the first week of October. So they're, they're really trying to go relatively slowly. So this business of the team, I didn't know that. But, you know, that's a, that's a situation where that cohort, it would sound like to me that team would be shut down, and they would, they would have to self-quarantine for 14 days. The Ledge Light officials, I keep raving about them because we're literally on the phone with them every day. They have been extremely supportive. And if we had something like that, we would presumably, we would shut down. I'd want to talk to Steve Mansfield, and we'd shut down a team for 14 days and then potentially come back, you know, once 14 days is over. Unless, you know, obviously unless the students are sick. Or if we think the risk, I'd certainly want to come back to the board. If we thought the risk of continuing athletics, it's not, in my mind, I've read too much about young people getting COVID and having lasting impact. So I think we would want to come back. I would, I would want to talk to Ledge Light and then come back to the board with a recommendation.
Sorry, I didn't mean to say that. I just, it was like went off, I guess it was on Channel 3 News.
Yeah.
So.
I think it's a question of when.
Rita?
No, I just wanted to know, besides that one case at the high school, has there been any other cases in school?
No. That, I sent out a message to, an automated phone call to the whole district, pledging that whenever there's a case, even if there's not really a case. What I said to the, to the people at the high school was that the, the person had not been in school for more than eight days. So of course, the code word there is that person, in all likelihood, was not infected. But anytime there's a case, I will immediately notify the staff and students of the school. And then Ledge Light will immediately begin the contact tracing.
Lee, and then Liz?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that the WNBA were supposed to, they're in the semifinals. And one, they were supposed to play last, yesterday afternoon. And one of the Seattle, I think it was the Seattle, Washington, whatever. Anyway, tested positive. And they actually didn't have the game.
Yeah.
And that's, that's two teams that, you know, I don't know what's going to happen. But anyway, everybody is being very, very careful.
Yeah, yeah. I can tell you, and Susan and I, and Beth knows, we've been in schools. Kids are wearing masks, teachers are wearing masks. They're following the rules of walking down the hallway. And it's kind of, it's kind of remarkable, to be truthful, at the high school to, passing time is relatively silent, and kids are walking in the right direction and going up the right staircase and down the right staircase and all that, all that sort of stuff. There's a high level of cooperation. People want to make this hybrid work. You know, that's kind of our commitment. Doug, I see Doug is here. So he, he, he knows. It's, it's actually going, in terms of health and safety, it's going well.
Liz?
Mike, you sent out, you said that you, you contacted the parents, the students and the staff. I received an email like at 2:30. Were the, was that the same time that you sent out the information or was it earlier? And I just wanted to ask is if, is it, I mean, I personally would like a robocall. I'd like to, if, if you're doing a robocall for the staff and for the teachers and for the families, I'd like one too. Because if you're doing that, let's say at 10 o'clock in the morning, and I don't find out about 2:30, I've already had six people ringing my phone. And I seem kind of, it seems kind of silly going, I didn't hear that. Let me get back to you.
Let me talk to, let me talk to Joyce tomorrow. When, when, when it was happening, there were a number of moving pieces in the central office. And to tell you the truth, I don't know if it went out by a robo. But I, I would, I, I would agree with you. We should, we should probably send, I know we sent it emergency, which means you get a text and you get a email and I'll, I'll talk to
I didn't give him the text. I just got
No, we never received that.
No, no, no. I just sent an email to you.
Right. Okay. But I just really would appreciate, you know, as early as possible notification.
Yeah. No, I, I, I agree.
Thank you.
I'll talk to Joyce.
Thanks.
Any other questions about fall athletics?
All right, we're going to move on to discussion of the three elementary schools.
Well, this is a, this is a, 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 a kind of a, a somewhat confusing topic. Because Sam and I started this, developing a dialogue for, for tonight about a CIP project. Then I realized like we, we have a few CIPs which we'll share with, with you next, next meeting. But I, I said, well, we probably won't have any CIPs for the three schools that are going to close. Then I said, wait a minute, the, the board is, is probably going to keep one of those buildings, perhaps more than one. So then I realized probably we ought to start a dialogue tonight about, we've got these three schools that in, on June 30th will be closed. Claude Chester, S B Butler and Mary Morrison. And from my perspective, and I think from Sam, and Sam can, can weigh in. There's, there's, there's value in, in keeping Mary Morrison as, as a, as a possible kind of overflow school. But also we need a, a school, as you may remember, for the robotics team. And we had a, we had a discussion at one point about keeping a school that perhaps would become not only the robotics team's place, but a, a, a kind of a Groton Tech Center. And so when I was talking to Sam, I thought, well, maybe the board needs to I don't know, Kim, I don't think we do it at a meeting like this. Perhaps there, perhaps there needs to be a, a, a bit of an ad hoc group or, or something that would look at what does the board want to do? And maybe it's a finance and facilities thing, Jay. We take it under our umbrella for the 5th of October to make a recommendation. You know, we, we, we know that, we know that there are, there are there are values to all three of those schools. And, but I'm sure that, that, so let me, let me go down the list just quickly. S B Butler needs a roof. So if the board Beth is holding her umbrella as we speak. So if the board wants to keep S B Butler, the town would have to invest about 750,000. Is that ballpark, Sam? More or less?
More, a, a little bit more, probably in the million-dollar range. Yes.
Okay. So, so the, the town would have to invest a, a million dollars to, to, to keep Butler. But, but of course, the, the, the building is in a nice location and has certain attractive features. But it's, it's certainly the oldest of the three. And then Claude Chester has the advantage of being right in the middle of town. And if they're right in the middle of the aquatic bridge. And if there was a, a, a need to expand like an early childhood center or a tech, tech center. It, it certainly would be a, a, a pretty nice place. And I don't think there's huge, if I'm right, Sam, I don't think there's huge CIP, like there's no roof or anything that we would have to do.
I thought the cafeteria had to be
We have the, we have the beams in the cafeteria that would have to be looked at by a structural engineer before we continued there, I think.
It's the floor of the gym, right?
Floor of the gym cafeteria, yes. And, and then Mary Morrison is a, is an interesting facility. I don't know. Is it fair to say it's in the best shape of the three, Sam?
I think that's fair.
And it's in the middle of a pretty large housing area. And, and if we, you know, I, I, I don't think Susan and I will, will do a little enrollment report next week. We, we don't, we don't see that we have insufficient space. In, in fact, when we, when we fully enroll both of the two new elementary schools in the fall. There will be, there will be plenty of, plenty, a couple hundred anyway. I don't want to exaggerate. But you know, we're not, we're, we're certainly not going to be bursting at the seams. So I think, well, clearly robotics needs to go someplace. So we don't want to, we don't want to give all three buildings back. So I, I don't know. I mean, it doesn't make sense to, I just made that up, to refer it to facilities.
Yeah, I, I, unless there's someone outside of the finance and facilities committee that really wants to be part of that discussion. But I guess they could always attend the meeting. But Jay, do you, Jay, how do you feel comfortable kind of having that underneath your purview? And, and kind of leading the discussion about what to do about those three to come on, come back to a committee of the whole with information?
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly do more fact finding on it. I, I was a little confused about, I know we just got, had work done at Claude Chester by an engineer. And so I was under the impression that was good for the 10 years. So there's definitely things that we need to look into further.
All right, great. So let, let's do that. And Sam and I will do a workup and we'll bring it to the committee, Jay.
I'm most, I'm also wondering if at, at some point too, that the curriculum committee is probably going to have to chomp on an early childhood or a, or tech center or what have you. Is that something that we're going to kind of recommend in the future? So I mean, I think that possibly that needs to be considered. I mean, I guess facilities needs to kind of take a look at it first, just to make sure that it, it's advantageous for us to keep one or two buildings. But then if we keep one or two buildings besides housing robotics, that's a lot of space for one program. Like what else, what else would we do with that? So
Well, remember we lost the A-frame. So we, we're losing the A-frame. So we, we need, we need more storage space anyway. So in June, in, in June of 21, we will lose access to Pleasant Valley School and to the A-frame.
Okay. Rita?
I thought the portables that were at the middle schools were moved to the administration building to use for storage.
Yes. But that's not nearly as big as the A-frame. The A-frame is like 10,000 square feet if I'm not mistaken. Yes, they're, they're coming. They have the platforms there built. And the children love to play on those platforms. They're going to be heartbroken. They had this big, nice platform of concrete that kids play, ride their bikes on.
Any other questions about that? So it's going to go, so Jay, I'm, I'm looking forward to kind of hearing continuous reports on that from the finance and facilities. But without further ado, like actually Jay, this kind of goes back right into your bellywood. Did you discuss any of these items in the finance and facilities?
Uh, yes. Well, Ken gave us a, a report on the, the COVID-related expenses so far. Along with, I know this is what you've all really wanted to hear, is we, we need to start thinking about the budget timeline already. So they've already laid out a preliminary timeline for that. Because we don't have anything else to do right now.
I'm actually rather bored.
Ken, did you want to share that? Did you want to share that, Ken? Or we could just talk about it?
Uh, which one would you like me to share? The
The budget timeline?
I will share that right now.
Mike, we also met today, Lori and Ken and I to also look at a, um, a, a brief analysis of the COVID-related expenses. So he's got, because we might make some changes. Um, we can't change the buckets right now, but we might be making some changes. So we'll start with the budget. But then I think we should share the other documents too.
Okay. Uh, so here's our, here's our budget timeline for, for this year. So this is two weeks from today. We'll, we'll kick this off. And start to get all the information out to the principals. So they can get the information back to us where, where we should be on track to throughout the month of December to, to review. At central office, we'll review it with the finance facilities committee at the meeting in December. And then beginning of January, we will present it to the board. And then we have, I think I counted six budget work sessions throughout January and February. And February 22nd, the board will adopt the budget for the year. And it goes from there.
So the, so the shocking thing that Ken pointed out to me was we have to eliminate the budget for three elementary schools and build the budget for two larger elementary schools. And so we, we of course started that work, but it's, it was, it was a, that's why we're going to do the enrollment report next, next week. It, it was, I mean, I, we, we knew it was coming, but all of a sudden it's here. So we have to, I know Susan's working with the naming committee and we got the themes going and we got the neighborhood. I, I can brief the board on that next week. But these two new elementary schools are going to have a budget and we're going to do a projected per pupil allocation. So it's, it's going to be a little, at the element, well, actually at, at the middle school, there already is only one budget for the thousand children who go to that school. But next week you'll see a budget or next month anyway. You'll, you'll see a budget for five elementary schools, not the, the current six that we have. So that was a, that was an eye-opener.
And Lori and the registrar have already kind of gotten ahead of the game by starting to take a look at that. So I think we're in good hands if we put all hands on deck.
So why don't you share what, what you did today, Ken?
Sure. The COVID relief funds. Uh, so we have available to us two, two sets of funds to pay for COVID-related expenses. The first one here, the Corona Relief Fund, the CRF Fund. This is a state fund and it was allocated to us by the state into these buckets. If you notice here, it says academic. So this is personnel academic related expenses. 893,759. We anticipate, we anticipate using these funds for subs that are going to be in the building. While others, while the teachers are remote, long-term subs that will replace the, the teacher that is out. We anticipate having maybe some additional building subs. An additional ATL teacher, additional PE teacher. We've already done a lot of curriculum development. And it's a lot of substitute personnel. That, that's what the majority of the, this, this amount is going to be used for. Then there was an amount that they allocated to us for student supports. And we anticipate using that to pay for a social worker and some, pay towards some community coordinators. They gave us $11,000 to put towards additional cleaning personnel. So we do have additional building custodians. So we'll, we'll definitely, definitely use that. And then 50,000 for transportation, which is going to be used for additional bus aids or, or any OT for addition, uh, current bus aids. If, if, if they need to do anything additional around, around COVID. And then they also gave us 175,000 right here for non-personnel related support. So these are, are, are goods. So like the desk shields that we bought, the additional PPE that we bought. We bought some clear mask, we bought some shields. And then we also got some additional custodial supplies, gloves and soap, and then these types of things. And so that will be used to pay for that. And so the total CRF fund that we're getting is 1,227,291. That application just opened, will be available tomorrow. So we haven't put it in yet, but we, we will get right on it. One thing to note on this fund, all expenses must be expended by December 30th of 20. So this is a hurry up and spend it type of thing.
And the interesting thing is they said that the monies can be allocated from March of 2020 to December of 2020, end of December. But we've already closed our NGR budget. So we're really looking at from July 1 through. And while they have given us these allocations, I think after you, we're at a webinar. Ken, you've got the information that if we do make adjust, if we need to make adjustments later on, that that might be possible, right?
That's right. Yeah. Initially, the application needs to be in these buckets as they were allocated. But if we find that we need more in other areas, more in cleaning or, or more in student supports. They, we will have an opportunity to reallocate. I don't know exactly how much yet. They haven't given us that information, but they said we'll have an opportunity for that later. Like in the October timeline, timeline.
Great.
And then in addition to that, we have the CARES Act. That's 664,000. I think we've talked about the CARES Act before. We anticipate using this to fund some of the food service expenses that were incurred. More building custodians because we only got 11,000 in the CRF. An additional social worker for the schools that don't currently have one. We, we put together some school supplies to send home with the students. So that was a, there was an expense there. The count, some calculators for the high school students. The document cameras that Susan talked about earlier, as well as some, all the softwares that we've, that we've also had to put in place. And then more additional substitute staff if, if we need that. The CARES Act, in contrast to the CRF, we can, we can spend this through, through June of 21. So this one's a little bit more flexible. This is actually a federal fund. And it's a little more flexible and there's no buckets per se, you know, that we had to do in, like we had to do in the CRF fund. So that one's a little bit more flexible. And so we will, we'll kind of fill that in where the other one doesn't, doesn't help us. So a total, total relief that looks like we're going to get is about 1.8 million dollars.
Thank God.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can, can you stop sharing so we can?
Certainly.
Thanks.
I have a question.
Yeah, I'll do, Liz.
Yeah, I'll do Liz and then Rita. Liz, we can't hear you. You're muted.
Sorry about that. Ken, have we seen a decline in the purchasing of breakfasts and lunches at the schools? I know that New London is experiencing some decline, quite a substantial decline, and it's impacting their budget. So I was wondering if we've experienced that as well.
I am not aware of that. I know at the, the present time, the lunches are, are, there's no charge. Isn't that true, Dr. Grenier?
Yeah, yeah, it's all free to everybody.
All over.
Breakfast and lunch, right?
That's right.
And even for the ones that are at full distance.
That's right. We distribute those on Sam on Wednesdays.
Yes, on Wednesdays.
Okay, I, I guess I'm off. Thank you.
Rita?
Um, my question was, how much are we paying our substitutes a day? And is it difficult to find substitutes?
I think the answer is ninety-five dollars.
It's a, yep.
And it is, we have been, we've been hiring. In many cases, we've been hiring building substitutes so that we, we lock them in for the whole year.
Yes.
But I, I, you know, there's not a lot of subs available. I believe that for sure is true. I haven't heard that we've met, maybe Susan knows, I don't know that we've met an actual area where we could not hire a sub. But clearly there's, there's not a ton of subs around.
I think the idea behind having the building sub was just as Mike said, to have them as a staff member and they do get paid more per day. I don't think it's much more than ten dollars more a day, but um, so I know that the principals have been connecting with HR department to, you know, get more names of people. And even to look at possibly teachers who didn't get jobs from last year. Some of ours have come back that way to be permanent building subs, so.
Um, I, I was just, I had a couple of questions. One is that I know a lot of districts have raised their rates for subs. I believe up to a hundred and forty dollars. So I just was wondering if we needed to go back to finance and discuss that at all if we were having a problem. And I remember when we, when the board voted to have one building sub in each building. And two at the high school and two at the middle school. I was shocked the other day when you shared that we had three in our school. I mean, before it came up for a board vote. So when all of a sudden you said, we have, you know, we have all these substitutes, was it six in the middle school and six in the high school?
So since I've been here, we've actually had two in the elementary. And it might be just four at the middle school and high school, but don't mark my words. And then through the Coronavirus Act, we've been able to add the additional sub at the elementary and maybe two at the middle school and high school. The, the point being that we've needed them Rita, because we have teachers because of health issues who can zoom in, but you still need a sub in the room with the kids. So because of that, and the numbers are much less than what we originally thought. So this was a better way to secure that that person would be there every day.
So that's it's not an issue. It's just that it's, to me, it's just, I just don't feel the board is that informed of when there are changes like that. And, you know, it would be nice to know, yeah, we're hiring one more permanent sub, you know, even if it's in the board notes. I, I would just like to be informed of when there are changes. You know, those are substantial changes to have permanent subs in your buildings. Because I thought the permanent subs, I know that they, they, they get paid whether they're in a substitute position or not. And I wasn't sure, so I'm almost positive you told me three in each of the elementary schools and six in the middle and six in the high school.
Two for many years, but this year, the Coronavirus Act, we were able to add another additional building sub at the elementaries.
Yeah, it would be nice to know also with these permanent subs. How many other subs do we also still need to hire a day? I mean, we're not doing all the initiatives we did before, but aren't we still hiring a lot of other daily substitutes for teachers who are out?
Um, I can get that report from Lori, but I don't think we've had, we've had to do a lot of that, at least so far. But I can check Lori, Lori, details, yeah.
Yeah, usually we get that when only, when it's negotiations. So I was just curious.
We could, we could look into that. That's a good question.
Thank you.
I, my question was around, does any of this, the funds that, on the buckets that Ken shared with us, are they? What, what's being allocated for like special ed services? Because I can't, I just can't imagine that we are using the same style with, with our students as, as we are now during COVID and sort of like what, what's going on with that?
We are, we are using the money across the board. But of course we hired two social workers. But the special education services, we, we have supported them, I know with software because I knew we have some hearing impaired folks. We have some social emotional, I mean, speech pathology lessons, but, but by and large, the services are continuing either remotely or through hybrid. And we, and we provide, we provide either full-time subs. There's, we've hired, for example, I think we have about seventeen people who are not coming in, at least for the foreseeable future. Many of whom involved with childbirth. So we hired substitutes for them. So there, there are undoubtedly some special ed folks there, but we're not making a special distinction. We're just providing support across the board, Kim.
Okay.
And for the students that have some of the most significant challenges in some of those self-contained classrooms, they are coming in four days a week. So, you know, through a process that was defined in the special education and through the state department, they were able to get those students in for four days instead of the kids who really struggled with the remote. So we're happy about that.
That's a good point. That's probably the biggest thing, Kim. Those children are coming in four days a week. They're getting more intensive services than, than the others. And then there's
So Alliance.
Yeah, I was going to say, so then there's this, not so great story. We, we were, we were told a year ago that the, if you remember, the Representative Conley and Dela Cruz were able to allocate three hundred thousand dollars for this year for FY twenty-one to help us with some of our alliance programs. So we put a budget together and we hired a social worker, for example. And, and the other day, last week, we got a phone call from the chief finance officer and the, and the chief academic officer. And they, they explained to us that their explanation was because the session ended somewhat prematurely and perhaps a bit in an unplanned way, the money actually never got transferred. So there is no three hundred thousand. So, so I immediately contacted Representative Conley. And she, she immediately wrote to the Secretary McCaw of the Office of Policy Management, OPM, that is a budget arm. And we, we heard, Ken heard today from Kathy Dempsey, who's the chief financial officer, that she contacted OPM and they are quote, "working on it." Chris Conley said, "We will get the money." That's, that's, that's for sure. The problem is it's, it's already part of our budget, of course. And so three hundred thousand dollars, but the, the, the State Department of Education folks, they, they weren't panic stricken. They, they just told us it's not there and we need to work to get it. So I, I think we'll be okay. We'll, hopefully we'll have a report for you next week that says the three hundred thousand dollars has, has been. It, it, it used to be charter money that they were going to transfer to us because the charter school closed. That transfer never technically took place. But the charter school is closed, so the money is somewhere. So they just have to, I, I think it's literally an accounting question, transferring it to Groton. But we'll let you know next week. What else, what else is new?
We get good news every day.
Yeah.
Any other questions about COVID funding or finances? I have a, I have a rather silly question. Does the town charter require us to go to the town council and RTM about the COVID funding? Does, doesn't it?
Does it? It, it was. It's not exactly, I, I guess the
Competitive grant.
It wasn't a grant. It, it was a legislative allocation to our ECS funds.
Kind of like the Alliance money was.
Yeah, exactly. We didn't go for the, if you remember, we got six hundred thousand dollars of Alliance money. It's the same, same thing. It, it, I mean, we could, I think we already notified them of that.
Right.
We could notify them that we lost it.
Watch them panic after the newspaper article too.
Let this play out and then I'll, I'll notify the town manager.
Okay. I just don't want this to kind of come back and sneak up and, and have people go, wow, I haven't used anything. I mean, I see it as, as special circumstances in terms of the fact that we're trying to meet the needs educationally of our, of our children and our families and our staff because of the pandemic, but but anyways, all right. Anything else on the finances? All right. Our favorite part, referral of review of the referral list and also future topics.
Are Jay's two referrals on here? From last week?
They didn't make it, did they?
No.
Ms. Joan, would you be, make sure that it gets back onto that referral list, Jay's stuff? I, I think the snow thing was answered, right?
One of them is on there.
Because the other one about the snow.
But I thought the snow was going to be handled in a different way.
You are very correct.
Could you remind me about the snow?
Yes, I will.
Oh, you mean what it's about?
Yes.
That, so we, yeah, Jay?
We were just wondering if, now that we have this distance learning set up, if we have a snow day that doesn't result in massive utility outages, whether you could just declare a distance day instead of a snow day?
I, I got the answer today and I'll put it in board notes. The answer is no. It, it, it came straight from the, the State Department of Education. They, they, and, and they supported it with a statutory requirement. I'll give you, I'll give you the whole spiel, but unfortunately, when these rules were written, of course, I did have to change the rule. And so I, I called a friend of mine in the commissioner's office and he said they're, they're quote, "working on it." It would require a change of the law, Jay. Right now, the official answer is if, if there's an emergency, like a snow type thing, you have to make up the day. But that was written at a time when we, we certainly wouldn't be able to shift. So they said, what the state board of ed said was it would be unfair to the kids who don't have the ability to shift to distance learning. Well, all of our kids have the ability to shift to distance learning. So that, 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 that that reason really is not relevant any longer. But I literally got it today and I'll put it in board notes.
Thank you.
But know that these things could change. What we know today could change for tomorrow.
That's for sure.
Any other?
Ken?
Yeah.
I want to clarify something about the future topic that's listed under my name. It was, I was just putting out a question about if teachers wanted to opt to teach remotely because they have a child at home sick or they, you know, they have to take a day. Would that be an option that they would be able to have? And then how would that be handled if they chose it? That's, I'm not saying this would be, I just wanted something. This was mentioned to me by a teacher a few years ago. And I just thought now is the time if we have the opportunity to, because well, everybody has the opportunity to do remote. Could this be something we would be looking into with the GEA and get their input on this as well? That's what I meant by mine.
Are you saying, I mean, we have a process for people to put in for remote teaching. I certainly wouldn't want to do it on a daily basis if that's what you're suggesting.
Yeah, that's what I was suggesting.
I mean, I, I think, I think that would be massive, massively chaotic, but
Yeah, okay.
I mean, we do have a process, you know, if someone, if someone has a, like a femla, you know, ten, ten, twelve week need to, to, to do that, and then we, we, we've actually accommodated several people.
Oh, okay. This was, like I said, brought to my, as a recommendation from a teacher friend who said, "I wish I could do this, you know, I have to be home." But if it's not feasible, then it's not feasible.
Yeah. And I certainly wouldn't want to put the expectation on a teacher with a sick child that they had to teach.
Yeah, that's true. Very true. But I thought it was important to bring up.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a fair question.
Jay, I noticed that one of them, we have a report from your favorite town committee, your field, your field committee. There's a number R, R twenty twenty eleven, a review of the fields in the district. I'm assuming that that's part of the work of the town, of the town committee that you're, you're in. And I was actually wondering if, if it would make sense that while that committee is still going, is if I put that under, do you know the time periods where like Rita will speak about learn, you'll speak about financing facilities? If that will add a field one so that you could kind of report out so that we can get some information, just some general information out? Does, would that, does that seem like that's feasible for you?
Sure, yeah. No, they've, we've been meeting all summer.
I know you have.
There has not been a final vote, but they've gathered a lot of opinions and I can certainly share all that.
So I'm just wondering, can we take it off of the referral list, but put it on the regular board agenda?
Sure, that's fine with me. And I'll be prepared to report next Monday.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
That would, that'd be great. Joan, did you get that?
Yes, I did.
Thank you, my friend. All right, I was able to get one thing off. All right, anything else? And is there a request for future topics?
Um, I have something. At the curriculum meeting, we, we talked about what, um, one, one, one community, one card for the library. And I have some questions about that. And I don't know if this, this is the place to put it. Or shouldn't it just go back to curriculum?
Wasn't there an ad, excuse me, wasn't there an ad hoc with the library about that?
A couple of years ago.
That did come up and the work that was done when we first started was around summer learning. So they're talking about how our kids can now access the, both the print and online digital information through this overdrive. So one of the things Amy McKenna came to us at the curriculum meeting to talk about was the, the work that they were doing in all the schools. And this has always been true in Groton, that we try to connect the library and get the kids to have library cards. So the hope is that all kids will have access to the library for both print and digital materials. And now with the the situation that we're in, the more books we can get in the hands of kids. And now with the, um, the situation that we're in, the more books we can get in the hands of kids, the better. So, um, so it's just, you know, I went back to find out more about privacy for students, you know, who would log into this overdrive system through the libraries. Um, so, you know, it's, I've got some information I can share back with curriculum.
All right, then we'll, we'll let it go to curriculum for now, but it may come, come back to the board.
Yeah, it sounds like it needs to come back to the board at some point.
Yeah, it does.
Uh, Kim?
Jay, where are you?
Does this come back, does this come back to the proposal from Betty Ann Ryder from a few years ago where every Groton student could just use their school ID to request books that then the library will deliver to the schools? And then we hear about, sense?
Yes, yes. So I'm not going crazy. We did have a, a committee in that.
Betty Ann and at least one other person have come to the board, they've talked about it, and it just, it went nowhere.
Well, I think the question in curriculum was, is it a secure enough system? That, um, you know, and I think that's why Dennis needs to be involved in this, too. We just want to make sure that the Student Privacy Act through the state of Connecticut, you know, is followed and that it's a safe system using the student ID. I don't think there's any concern with using their library card.
No, no, it was using their ID. I remember memeing. I was there.
Jane?
I just, it's just a heads up.
Jane, did you have anything to say? You're, you need to unmute yourself, though. There she goes.
No, not yet. And we know why Jane mutes it. Um, it's touching on throughout Connecticut. Hartford is in the middle of the same, the same project. Um, and I've seen reports on that in the evening news, so just to know that it's, it's happening around us.
Right.
Wouldn't it be a great idea if just every student was given a library card and not have to use the student ID? I mean, it seems to make more sense.
Well, I think that's kind of in the meantime, one card, one community, that we're trying to push that out. That's definitely what we're working on. But then when they had mentioned using their student IDs, that's something we more carefully have to do, and, and the curriculum wisely suggested that we, you know, get more information.
Yep, yeah.
You might want to, I mean, part of this is that we have a meeting not until 7:30, guys, so that's why we're having a little bit more freer conversation. But Andrea, you might want to, at the curriculum meeting, to see if someone from the library can join you, so that. Oh, they did.
They did. Now, now it's in, it's in, we're going to meet with Dennis.
Okay.
At the next meeting. But I just wanted to, since this was topics for the future, that I just wanted to give you a heads up. That's all.
Thank you.
I had a question that maybe a possible agenda topic would be, what are, what's happening with the after-school clubs at all, the, the middle school, even the elementary, but the high school especially? There are so many wonderful clubs there. Are they going on at all? Any type of, you know, we're having, we talk about sports all the time, but are we doing anything with our newspaper or robotics? I assume robotics is going on because that's a sport now.
Yes, for sure.
But are we doing anything with our, with our clubs?
You know what, I'm gonna have to, I know we're doing.
Look at that's agenda.
I know we're doing middle school intermurals and sports.
Yeah, that's sports again.
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't.
Good question, Rita. We need to find that out.
I don't know, but we'll find out, and I'll put it in board notes.
Because, you know, they are getting, I don't know if they're getting paid, but we do have that Schedule C. Where, you know, so it would be nice to know what, what, what's happening. But also, I think it'd be very important for the students to somehow connect on Zoom for the, for the clubs.
Yeah, yeah, it's a good idea.
And I know they, they also, we also had a club that would make sure students were registered to vote, especially before the presidential election. And obviously, since that club isn't meeting, I was just wondering, is there any way to, you know, have these students that turned 18 over the summer register to vote?
I know there's been a real push on this, but I'll, I'll, I'll check with Ted.
Okay, yeah, because there, it's always given to every senior that graduates, but then there are always those juniors that turn 18.
Yeah, right, that's right, that's right.
Thank you.
Kim, if we could go back to, to a topic, Sam just sent me a note that I was not aware that, there's a, there's a sort of a little sports update that I wasn't aware of. Could you fill us in, Sam?
Yeah, we, our outside worker at the high school was asked today to line the football field for a JV football game on Thursday at 4:30. So that's scheduled for 4:30 on Thursday, seven-on-seven football. And I checked in with both Ben and Ted, and Ted responded that, yes, indeed, it is seven-on-seven football on Thursday.
So it's like an ECC thing?
I don't know the details of that.
When you say seven-on-seven, are you saying it's going to be like the flag football type of deal? Or is it gonna be full tackle?
There won't be any linemen banging into each other.
No, no equipment, no helmets, no pads, no full contact.
Okay.
So is this considered competition or just like a skill builder?
Competition.
Okay.
I thought we were waiting till October 1st.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought we were, too. Well, maybe it's a scrimmage or something. I, I, I don't know.
I think you need to find out more information, because I think that if, if, if we talked about October 1st is when we're going to start, um, I'm uncomfortable because that's not the great, the greatest message to send out to the sports community.
Yeah, we'll, we'll figure out what's going on. I, I was not aware that they were organized to that level, but we'll, we'll, we'll tell you next week.
Okay, thank you. Did you see the message from Mark?
I think, well, message that, I think Mark sent me a message.
So there's, all right, so it sounds to me, folks, is that Mark needs a chance to set up the group chats, and he's going to send us out a link, um, because we're going to go back into a special meeting, and then we're going to go out into executive session, um, for the next, for the, for the next, for the next meeting. But we need to go into our regular meeting. So Mark needs a chance to be able to set this up. So Mark, my understanding is, is that you just need to give us about, you just need about 10 minutes, which would be perfect, it would be on time. Um, is that, is that cool, Mark? I don't know.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. All right, so Andrea?
Motion to adjourn.
Can I have a second?
Second.
I think Jay had a question.
I think Jay.
Just a clarification for the members of the public. So when we come back out of executive session, will we be taking a vote?
Potentially, because the topic is discussion and possible action regarding a proposed agreement.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
So we are, everyone is invited to come back into this meeting because it is a public meeting, but we are most likely going to need to go into executive session because of, of the topic.
And we'll have a new link.
And we're going to have a new link. All right, so I have a first, so I have a first, and I have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I propose. All right, see you guys in a minute.
So we're supposed to leave, then come back?
Yes, that's true.
New link, come back with a new link.